I'll call this meeting to order. It's six o'clock on my phone, April thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. First of all, I need to ask to, yes, Keith, from the, the, the.
Make a motion to.
I make a motion to.
Rec- what's the word?
For the recusal of Keith Morse's chair.
Recru- recu- recu- recusal. We're gonna refuse.
I have one, you have that one.
There we go, yeah, you didn't want to do it.
I'll second that motion.
Are y'all in favor? So now I make a motion to make me acting chair.
I'll make a motion that Tim becomes acting chair for this meeting.
All right, in all favor?
You're official.
Nice.
We have.
Congratulations.
So we need to, just been here the minutes, it's been awhile this week, Matt. So we have, first of all, February twenty-third minutes. And I've got time to look that over. That was on the first hurry about the Briggs. Where should the Briggs land in? That looks good to me, everybody.
I make a motion, we accept the minutes as presented.
All right, in all favor? Are you, are you in all favor? Yeah, I think so. And now, March fourth minute, our site walk through. We went out in that, it was, it was pretty.
Walking through a foot and a half of snow.
Was a good day.
Yep.
You won't forget it.
No.
Nope.
I make a motion that the minutes on March fourth be accepted as presented.
I second that. All in favor? All right, good, good, that. So I, um, business, item one on the business. So we're back to discuss forty-seven Briggs Lane. And, yeah, they have that paperwork in front of us. So I didn't bring.
We do have that right there.
We got, yeah, you should have that.
We don't have your mask, do we? Oh, very good. So the, so we need to have a discussion on the, the structure being rebuilt, where it is, or being moved back to the most practical extent. And so this is where, I'd like Jim to give us some clarity on that phrase, the most practical extent.
Thank you. First of all, I'm Jim Katz-Pikus, I'm with the law firm in Perkins Thompson down in Portland, and glad to be here this evening as conflict counsel to try to provide some advice to the, to the planning board. You've really got four things in front of you, in that this is a shoreland zoning matter. And so in order to allow any activity, rebuilding, relocation, reconstruction, expansion in shoreland, you have to get a permit. And that shoreland permit requires a finding that eight criteria are met. At the same time, you also have to look at this because three other things are being requested. One is reconstruction. Another is that you get to, after you get through reconstruction, and that's enlargement of this, expansion of the structure. And then finally, there's a request for a new foundation. As I understand it, and I'll stand corrected, there's no foundation that stands out there now. Okay, that's, that's what I thought, but just wanted to be sure. So when you're looking at reconstruction, which is really the first place you have to start, of what this, what the ordinance says, and it's because the state model shoreland zoning ordinance that applies to every municipality maintenance says and requires, is that in the event that a structure like this is damaged by fifty percent or more in market value, then it can only remain in place if, if you find that you can't, that it can't be pushed back to the greatest extent possible. The law wants you to move it to the greatest practical extent back beyond the hundred-foot setback that applies to a great pond like Thompson Lake, when there's been so much damage, fifty percent or more. So what does it mean? Well, what the, what the statute says, that if you're looking at whether this is being moved back to the greatest practical extent, you take a look at several considerations. One of them is the size of the lot. Another is the slope of the land, the potential for soil erosion, the location of other structures on the property and on adjacent properties, the location of the subsurface wastewater disposal system, and other, whether there are other onsite soils that are suitable for septic systems, and the type and amount of vegetation you'd have to remove in order to accomplish relocation if you're going to push it back beyond the, the hundred-foot setback. In addition, you have to take a look at whether there's a foundation present and its physical condition, if there is any. So those are the considerations you're supposed to, to make. And the real question is, when you look at all of that, when you look at the slope of the soil, when you look at how much you'd have to remove for vegetation, when you look at whether there's room given in the back over the hundred feet beyond, whether there's a septic system you'd have to move or change, whether there's, there're buildings that are in place, that, whether you have any room to actually move it back. So it's not the greatest theoretical extent possible, it's the greatest practical extent. And so you look at all of those factors individually and then consider them. And on the basis of the consideration, then you make a judgment as to whether this should be moved back. And if it has to be moved back, the entire envelope, the entire footprint, all sixteen-hundred-four square feet would be moved back. So that's the first issue. It's reconstruction, should it be moved back to the greatest extent possible practically? And then, if you, whether you say yes or no, if you, if you say yes, it can be moved back, then it gets moved back. If you say no, it can stay in place, that's fine. Now you've established where that grandfathered, non-conforming building can be rebuilt. Then the question is, can it be expanded and do you put a foundation on it? The foundation test is the same. You've set the foundation back to the greatest practical extent. So it did, whatever you decide on, the building, it follows the foundation, it'd go in the same place. Then the question of the expansion. An expansion is allowed, is allowed, as I understand it, this is within seventy-five feet of normal high water, the entire structure. Then it's allowed up to the greater thirty percent or, uh, it allows for the four-hundred square feet, it's thirty percent or one-thousand square, uh, or one-thousand square feet, whichever is greater. And that would allow thirty or four-hundred square feet that's being requested here. But that's the last piece, because you don't know what you're expanding, whether it's staying.
Within seventy-five feet.
If it's within seventy-five feet. If it's within a hundred feet setback, a little bit further, then there's a little bit further, a little bit more available expansion possibility. You only get one, well, the total of any expansions, a lifetime limit, any expansions after January one nineteen eighty-nine. So you can't keep on coming back to the year old. I don't know, thirty percent is thirty percent total after January one. So that's the drill. We'll take a look first at whether you can reconstruct in place, or whether it has to move, be moved back to the greatest practical extent. You look at those criteria. And then, if you have questions, you certainly have people here who can ask the questions, so. Then once you make that decision, does it stay or does it go? Then you can take a look at the foundation, because that should follow the same criteria. And then take a look at the expansion, and then whether that's permitted. But the first step really is talking about those eight criteria. Now recognizing that, that's an awful lot to keep in mind, I put together a draft notice of decision. I'm gonna just, I'm gonna pass that out. And it's, it's written as an approval. It doesn't lock you into an approval, it just gives you the criteria so you know what you're looking at. I have some for the town manager and also for the applicant.
Thanks.
So this is, I'm not trying to make your decision for you, I'm trying to just help guide you on this. And you're free to deny or find otherwise in this, it's just a way to get started. Would it help for me to read it aloud, and we could just work through the findings, one by one, and see if we're all in agreement? And then you could adopt the findings as a whole? Because that's, that shouldn't be the controversial part, I hope. Okay? So, notice of decision, applicant Amelia Dow, forty-seven Briggs Lane, is the property tax map lot number U O two oh four dash oh seven. Subject is a shoreland zoning reconstruction expansion application. Background, town of Oxford Planning Board heard this application by applicant Amelia Dow, who reconstructed, expanded cottage, and constructed new foundation on property located at forty-seven Briggs Lane, tax map lot number U O two oh four oh seven, on February twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three, and continued the application to April thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. It also conducted a site visit on March fourth, two thousand and twenty-three. Planning board chair Keith Morse, vice chair Tim Moes, and members Alan Lima and Edward Adams were present at the February twenty-three meeting. Actually, I have that wrong, it wasn't Mr. Lima, it was, it was Mr. Lobozo. So I apologize, and I'll make sure your name goes into this final draft that will be reviewed and signed eventually. Chair Morse was recused from participation in the April thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting, and vice chair Moes chaired that meeting, chaired that meeting. Findings of fact, one, applicant Amelia Dow is the owner of property located at forty-seven Briggs Lane, tax map number U two four oh seven, the property that is the subject of this application. The title was demonstrated by a warranty deed dated July fifteen, two thousand and twenty-one, recorded in the Oxford County Registered Deeds at Book five six two-two, page seven seven five, and an abstract dated January twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-two, recorded in the Oxford County Registered Deeds at Book five six seven-nine, page seven one-eight. You have the, uh, the title in front of you, the deeds, simply to show that the applicant has the right to be here, has standing to be in front of the board. Two, the property has an area of twenty-one thousand nine hundred fifty square feet, shore furnished one hundred fifteen feet, and is approved by a lawfully non-conforming seasonal dwelling, measuring twelve hundred four square feet, located in the residential shoreland zone within a hundred-foot water setback from Thompson Lake, with a portion closest to the normal high water line being setback forty-five feet, which dwelling has not been expanded since January one nineteen eighty-nine. If I get anything wrong here, or someone takes issue, please stop me, we'll make the changes. Three, a portion of the property beyond the hundred-foot water setback is wooded and contains a gravel drive and a shed carport structure, as shown under the Nettow Land Survey's Mortgage Inspection Plan dated June thirty, two thousand and twenty-one, included in the application. This portion of the property also contains a functional subsurface wastewater disposal system dwelling, root systems of several trees that were downed in the storm, and many remaining trees in their root systems, and is subject to an easement in favor of Central Main Power Company for an electrical service line that crosses the property. Four, the applicant explains that the property is flat topography, and that while the existing sub- subsurface wastewater disposal system is a gravity feed system, any relocated replacement system would require a pump. Five, on December twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-two, a microburst permit took down a number of trees on the property, one of which damaged the applicant's dwelling beyond repair. The shed and carport also were destroyed by falling trees but are being rebuilt under separately issued building permit and are not part of this application. Six, the applicant removed the destroyed dwelling and trees from the property and filed this application, which the town received on February fourteen, two thousand and twenty-three, and which the town's code enforcement officer plays before the planning board to review. Seven, the application seeks approval to reconstruct the destroyed dwelling within its original footprint, to expand it away from the water by four hundred square feet, and to construct a new foundation for the expanded structure. The proposed expansion would be dwelling six feet in length and four feet in width, porch two feet in depth, existing stairs one foot in length and one half foot in depth, and new set of stairs five feet in length and three feet in depth would be added. The prior dwellings nineteen foot seventy-three eighths inch height would be maintained. Are those facts correct, as you understand them and heard them before? Does anyone, I'm looking to counsel, any, anyone take exception to that? Uh, if, if, in order to help move this along, if the board wanted to make a motion to accept the findings of fact and conclusions of law as written, that would be appropriate?
I make a motion that we accept them as written and read.
I'll second that.
All right, in all favor of accepting the finding effects?
Make a check to include Mr. Lobozo, we'll make sure we go all, all on board. All right, so we'll start wading through the tough part, which is the conclusions of law. But just to make sure that we go through the process and get it in, in the right order. So, conclusions of law. One, the applicant has provided evidence of her ownership of the property, and so the planning board concludes that she has standing to bring this application. Motion to accept that conclusion? She submitted the deeds, shows she owns the property. Want to adopt that conclusion?
Make a motion to accept if there is a deed.
I'll second it.
Okay. Two, the planning board observes that under section sixteen D of the Shoreline Zoning Ordinance, the applicant shall have the burden of proving that the proposed land use activity is in conformity with the purposes and provisions of this ordinance. We, we can wait a second on that one, if we can adopt that as part of the next. Three, section sixteen B of the Shoreline Zoning Ordinance provides that no person shall, without first obtaining a permit, engage in any activity or use of land or structure requiring a permit in the district in which such an activity or use would occur, or expand, change, or replace an existing use of structure, or renew a discontinued non-conforming use. So you have to first get that shoreland permit, and then the criteria are beneath. Sixteen D of the Shoreland Zoning Ordinance sets out the criteria toward these shoreland permits. The board shall approve an application, or approve it with conditions, if it makes a positive finding based on the information presented, that the proposed use will maintain safe and healthy conditions, will not result in water pollution, erosion, or sedimentation of surface waters, will adequately provide for the disposal of all wastewater, will not have an adverse impact on spawning grounds, fish aquatic life, bird, or other wildlife habitat, will conserve shore cover and visual as well as actual points of access to inland and coastal waters, will protect archaeological and historic resources as designated in comprehensive plan, will avoid problems associated with floodplain development and use, and is in conformity with the provisions of section fifteen land use standards. Applying these criteria to the facts presented by applicant, the planning board finds and concludes that the proposed use, one, will maintain safe and healthy conditions. Based on the applicant's statement that there is a functioning subsurface wastewater disposal system, and call it a septic from that line, on the property to serve the reconstructed dwelling in expansion, and that the application meets the reconstruction and expansion standards below, the planning board concludes the applicant has met this standard. Does that seem fair? Is that, okay? I'll, I'll just stop you after each one, and then you can take a vote on two and three together. So, uh, so two, will not result in water pollution, erosion, or sedimentation of surface water. Because the dwelling was and will be served by a functioning septic system on the property, and with the addition of a condition of approval requiring applicant to provide a suitable construction erosion and sedimentation control plan to the CEO for approval before issuance of a building permit, the planning board concludes the applicant has met this standard. I assume that the CEO requires a sedimenta- erosion-sementation control plan before, something like this.
I believe so, yeah.
Uh, three, will adequately provide for the disposal of all wastewater. Because the dwelling was and will be served by a functioning septic system on the property, the planning board concludes the applicant has met this standard. Four, will not have an adverse impact on spawning grounds, fish aquatic life, bird, or other wildlife habitat. The application seeks to construct a, reconstruct a twelve-hundred-four-square-foot lawfully non-conforming structure into expanded landward by four hundred square feet, and so the planning board concludes the reconstruction and expansion will have a negligible impact on spawning grounds, fish aquatic life, bird, or other wildlife habitat. Does that seem, is that, is that appropriate? Five, will conserve shore cover and visual as well as actual points of access to inland and coastal waters. The application seeks to reconstruct the twelve-hundred-four-square-foot lawfully non-conforming structure and to expand it landward by four hundred square feet, with that proposed expansion extending as follows, a dwelling, six feet in length, four feet in width, porch two feet in depth, existing stairs one foot in length and, uh, one foot in depth, and new stairs five feet in length and three feet in depth. The planning board concludes that the reconstruction and expansion on a twenty-one thousand nine hundred fifty-square-foot lot will have minimal, if any, impact on shore cover and visual as well as actual points of access to inland and coastal waters, and so will preserve the same. Is that, does the board accept that? Six, will protect archaeological and, we're halfway through, historic resources as designated in the comprehensive plan. There's no evidence of any archaeological and historic resources as designated in the comprehensive plan on a rebuttal in property, and so the planning board concludes that this standard is inapplicable to the application. Is that correct? Seven, will avoid problems associated with floodplain development and use. The property is not located in a floodplain, and so the planning board concludes that this standard is inapplicable to the application. And eight, is in, is in conformity with the provisions of section fifteen land use standards. The application seeks to reconstruct and expand a lawfully non-conforming structure, which the previous existing dwelling was, and seeks to do so in compliance with the Shoreland Zoning Ordinance reconstruction and expansion requirements, for the reasons stated above in one through eight of this paragraph three, and below in paragraph four, the planning board concludes the applicant has met this standard. So is there a motion, if that's all fine, is there a motion to adopt paragraphs two and three of this conclusions of law?
I make a motion that we accept two and three as read and written.
I'll, I'll second that.
All right, in all favor?
Okay, the next part's gonna get a little involved, this is with regard to the reconstruct, the reconstruction criteria. So this is paragraph four, and it has several parts, so we're just going to be dealing with the reconstruction, the foundation, and the expansion. So we'll take that all in one fell swoop. Four, in addition to the shoreland criteria, the planning board reviews reconstruction and expansion of non-conforming structures in the shoreland zone under sections twelve C one and twelve four of the Shoreland Zoning Ordinance of the municipality of Oxford, the S, we call it the S C O. Under the main Supreme Judicial Court's decision in Oxford Family Trust versus Campbell of Owlstead, the planning board first reviews the reconstruction of the dwelling in its original footprint before addressing the expansion request. So with regard to the reconstruction and replacement of the dwelling footprint only, section twelve C four of the Shoreland Zoning Ordinance states, "For reconstruction or replacement, any non-conforming structure which is located less than the required setback from a water body, tributary stream, or wetland, and which is removed for damage destroyed regardless of the cause by more than fifty percent of the market value of the structure before such damage, destruction, or removal, may be reconstructed or replaced, provided that the permit is obtained within eighteen months of the date of said damage, destruction, or removal, and provided that such reconstruction or replacement is in compliance with the water body, tributary stream, or wetland setback requirement to the greatest practical extent as determined by the planning board or as designated in accordance with the purposes of this ordinance. In no case shall a structure be reconstructed or replaced, including the foundation, so as to increase its nonconformity. If the reconstructed or replacement structure is less than the required setback, it shall not be enlarged than the original structure, except as required, as allowed pursuant to twelve C one above, which is accepted to be an enlargement provision, as determined by the nonconforming footprint of the reconstructed or replaced structure at its new location. If the total footprint and volume, including the foundation of the original structure, can be relocated or reconstructed beyond the required setback area, no portion of the relocated or reconstructed structure shall be replaced or constructed at less than the setback deployment for any structure. When it's necessary to remove vegetation, replace, or reconstruct a structure, vegetation shall be replanted in accordance with section twelve C three above. Any nonconforming structure which is located less than the required setback from a water body, tributary stream, or wetland, and which is removed by fifty percent or less than the market value, or damaged by fifty percent or less than the market value of the structure, including normal maintenance and repair, may be reconstructed in place if the permit is obtained from the CEO within one year of such damage, destruction, or removal. In determining whether the building reconstruction or replacement meets a setback to the greatest practical extent, the planning board or as designated shall consider, in addition to any of the criteria in twelve C three above, the physical condition and type of foundation present defending. With regard to the greatest practical extent standard, twelve C three of the S C O states, "In determining whether the building relocation meets the setback to the greatest practical extent, the planning board or as designated shall consider the size of the lot, the salt of the land, the potential for soil erosion, the location of other structures on the property and on adjacent properties, the location of the subsurface wastewater disposal system and other onsite suitable soil suitable for septic systems, and the type and amount of vegetation to be removed to accomplish the relocation. Applicant seeks to reconstruct the dwelling in place. On the basis of testimony, the applicant photographs of damage to the dwelling provided by her, the planning board concludes that the applicant has demonstrated the dwelling was damaged or destroyed regardless of the cause by more than fifty percent of the market value of the structure before such damage was structured or removed, and so is entitled to reconstruct the dwelling under the Shoreland Zoning Ordinance, twelve C four. The planning board also concludes that the application has been filed within the eighteen-month window under section twelve C four. Are we in agreement so far, as far as proofing damage?
Yep.
Total, uh, and, uh, they, they were in the eighteen months, uh, the last December, February's when it was filed. Okay, as to each of the factors regarding the greatest practical extent, the planning board considers each of the following. One, the size of the lot, the salt of the land. The planning board determines that the property, which has an area of twenty-one thousand nine hundred fifty square feet in the shoreland zone, uh, which requires forty thousand square foot minimum lot size for dwelling under section fifteen A one of the Shoreline Zoning Ordinance, is a lawfully nonconforming lot, and that it has flat topography. Is that correct?
Yep.
Two, the potential for soil erosion. The planning board determines that the property has a flat topography that may inhibit the potential for soil erosion. Is that fair? Three, the location of other structures on the property and on adjacent properties. The planning board determines the carport shed had been rebuilt in their prior locations on the portion of the property beyond a hundred-foot setback, and that the driveway, the existing functioning septic system also are contained within this rear portion of the property, which is nearly half of the current minimum lot area. Is that a fair statement from the, from the evidence?
Yep.
Four, the location of the septic system and other onsite soil suitable for septic systems. The planning board determines that the planning, the property has a flat topography, and that while the existing septic system is a gravity feed system, any relocated replacement system would require a pump. That was offered by the applicant, and I don't know if you wanted to have, if you have other questions or comments, or want to change that?
I have a question. So it's being, currently, it was, the sewer was being fed into the tank, gravity fed, and then out to the leach field, so. By moving, if the house was, probably was moved back, it could still be gravity fed to that tank, in, in my thinking, there, just because the tank is, just because the, the house could possibly, could possibly move, it could still be gravity fed to that tank, and then from that tank it goes to the leach field, so. I'm not sure, I mean, in my thinking, it doesn't mean that it has to have a pump. So I, I don't know if that statement is correct.
Um, it's, it's probably a little bit more complicated than that. It probably would have to put a, a new septic tank in, orientated differently, um, you know, in accordance to, if the house were moved, you would have to move the tank as well, um, so it would be a new tank, um, and then. And then, the other issue with that, when the house becomes too close to the leach field, if you move it back, so it would, the leach field would have to be relocated, and most likely would, would be a pump in the zone.
The other thing that was explained to me is, it was hard to see with the snow, but if you're there, you do see that it, the land slopes back from, where the water is down the driveway. So by moving the structure closer, you don't have the slant of the gravity. It's not as far a drop down.
It does drop as much as like two feet. I've had transit out there, and there's a two-foot drop.
Is the home would be lower down or higher?
Lower.
Lower, unless you, you know, just don't go way up.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
We don't have an objection. If you want to change the word, would, may, and that surely drives your concern. So it's a may or a stop.
Yeah, maybe, but, yeah.
I think that's probably the natural statement.
Would it also be accurate to say that moving dwelling footprint back beyond 100 feet would require installation of a new septic tank?
Or reorient, reorientation in the tank.
Would require, okay, installation or reorientation of...
Mostly likely a new, a whole new septic system.
Exactly.
So the, well, okay, we'll see. But the... Yeah, so we really don't know the exact location of the leach fields, do we? I mean, it was kind of laid out for us.
Yeah, I believe it's flagged out there with states and...
But that was, that was a general understanding of where it is.
How would the planning board word your consideration under this one? On the report, on number four. The planning board determines that moving the dwelling footprint beyond the 100-foot water setback might require installation or reorientation of a new septic tank? Does "might" be the right word?
May.
Okay.
May require. I think it would better, I think it's a, would most likely require.
Is that how the board sees it?
Most likely require.
Most likely would require installation or reorientation of a septic, of a new septic tank, and that while the existing septic system is a gravity feed system, any relocated system, replacement system may require a pump?
Yeah.
Is that a fair way of saying it? Okay. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'll give you... I wasn't at the meeting on February 23rd, but I did watch the tape. And my recollection is that Mr. Brown, your CEO, who was also a licensed plumbing inspector, indicated that if the new structure were moved back into the area where the system is located, then it would have to have a new system installed even further back. And Jared, that's your assessment?
That's my understanding, too.
So?
Is that the recollection of what Mr. Brown said at that time? So maybe we, another way to say this is that the planning board determines that moving the dwelling footprint beyond 100-foot water setback most likely would require installation or reorientation of a new septic system and likely may require entirely a new septic system. Is that a fair statement of what Mr. Brown said?
I wouldn't say entirely a new septic system.
Okay, what would you say? And likely would require?
Reorientation.
Yep.
The tank.
The tank.
Or, or a pump.
Okay. Instead of, what we say, and may require, and may require a new system? Well, if that's true, I don't want to...
Yeah, I mean, if it's moved, the most practical extent doesn't have to mean before 100 feet. It doesn't, it could be moved back as far as...
Well, it's interesting, yeah, it could be moved back just a little bit or whatever, but the idea here is that if it's possible to move the entire grandfather footprint of 1,200 square feet back beyond 100 feet, then you will do that. You can't move it forward just a little bit beyond 100. If you can move it back, move the whole thing. But if you can't, because there are these issues with the site, because of vegetation, because of currents, because of erosion and sedimentation, all these factors that you will consider, then you might decide, you know, there's no room to put 1,200 square feet back here. And so let's just get the wording on this one right, so we're all on the same page. I want to make sure it's all right. The planning board determines that moving the dwelling footprint beyond 100-foot water setback most likely would require installation or reorientation of a new septic tank and may require a pump or a new sewer, new septic system. Is that a fair statement?
That's a fair statement, I accept that.
Five, the type and amount of vegetation to be removed to accomplish the relocation. Planning board determines that the relocation of the previously existing nonconforming bond structure relocation behind 100-foot setback would require excavation of soil to remove the current functional septic system and would require excavation and removal of the root systems of blown-down trees, as well as removal of existing trees and their root systems, and possible moving of the CMP power line and associated easement. Is that all? What would you want to say? May require excavation of soil to remove the current functional septic system, since I think "may" is what he used in the last one.
Yeah.
Want me to read that back again?
I'm reading it myself.
Okay, sorry. You told me you wanted to shut off. It's okay.
Can I say something? I met with CMP on location on March 13th and was informed that the CMP power line couldn't remain or it was. If the power line can't remain, cannot be in front of the pipeline, it has to be defined differently. So where it says possible moving of the CMP power line, they wouldn't be able to get in and work on the power lines in the front.
So what could be added here is impossible moving of the CMP power line and associated easement since it must be located behind the dwelling.
I addressed that in my letter to the board, as soon as part of the record.
It is.
Central Main Power representative came to the site, met with him, discussed moving the house back, and was told, if you move it back, it's going to impair our ability to service the line, we're going to have to move the line. They now put the line back up because it may be losing power. And it's also going to require easements from the abutters because when the line comes in at whatever angle across the property, if it's shifted back on the property, it's going to have to shift the location on the abutting properties, which generates the need for more reasons. So I think it's fair to say that if the house, new house, were pushed back to that location, the line would have to be...
It would require moving of the CMP.
It would.
It's not, not... Yeah, I'm making that word.
Requires moving.
The board, you can duly note it. So I'll read it back one more time and see what changes you want to make. The planning board determines that the relocation of the previously existing nonconforming dwelling structure to a location behind the 100-foot setback may require excavation of soil to remove the current functional septic system and would require excavation and removal of the root systems of blown-down trees, as well as removal of existing trees and their root systems, and would require moving of the CMP power line and associated easement since it must be located behind the dwelling. Is that a fair statement?
Yep.
All right. Six, the physical condition and type of foundation present, if any, no foundation is present. Based upon these considerations, the planning board concludes that the total footprint of the original structure cannot be relocated or reconstructed beyond the required setback area. We can say beyond 100, beyond the required 100-foot setback, and that they were very clear. Maybe that changed now. Since this would require the excavation of soil and root systems, possible removal and replacement of a functional septic system, and the potential loss of trees and relocation of the power line, all in a substandard lot, which would be more likely to result in erosion and sedimentation and potential harm to the lake and to the shoreline environment than allowing the dwelling to be reconstructed in place. Therefore, the planning board concludes that the dwelling may be reconstructed in its original footprint. Is that a fair statement?
Yes. The ones we were saying that...
Given all these considerations.
Yeah, if it stays there, there's less, sort of, more...
Less harm to the lake, to the environment.
Yeah, I agree with that.
With regard to foundations, Section 12C2 provides, "Whenever a new enlarged or replacement foundation is constructed under a nonconforming structure, the structure and new foundation must be placed such that the setback requirement is met to the greatest practical extent," let's try to test again, "as determined by the planning board or its designee, basing its decision on the criteria specified in Section 12C3 relocation below." So what I've written here is for the same reasons cited above with regard to Section 12C3, the reconstruction. The planning board concludes that the new foundation of the reconstructed dwelling may be constructed in the dwelling's original footprint. Is that, board accept that? Last substantive piece here. With regard to expansions of nonconforming structures, Section 12C1 of the Shoreline Zoning Ordinance states, "Expansions, all new principal," and I'm not going to read this whole darn thing, I'm going to read those provisions that are relevant. "This is all new principal and accessory structures excluding functionally water-dependent uses must meet the water body, tributary stream, or wetland setback requirements contained in Section 15B1." That's the 100-foot setback for new structures. "A nonconforming structure may be added to or expanded after obtaining a permit from the same permitting authority as that for a new structure if such addition or expansion does not increase the nonconforming of the structure and is in accordance with subparagraphs A, B, C, and D below." A is not directly relevant, B is not directly, uh, directly relevant, because that's for structures that are going to buy future water. C is. "All other legally nonconforming principal and accessory structures that do not meet the water body, tributary stream, or wetland setback requirements may be expanded or altered as follows, as long as other municipal law land use standards are met and the expansion is not prohibited by other sections above." So this is the part that really applies here. I, "For structures located less than 75 feet from the normal high water line of a water body, tributary stream, or upland edge of a wetland, the maximum combined total footprint for all structures may not be expanded to a size greater than 1,000 square feet or 30% larger than the footprint that existed on January 1, 1989, whichever is greater. The maximum height of any structure may not be made greater than 20 feet or the height of the existing structure, whichever is greater." So that's really the focus here. What they're proposing, they've got 1,204 square foot structure proposing to go to 1,600 square feet. This is a 400-square-foot increase. And so the question is, does that meet the test? And it's within the 75 foot. So what I've written down here is, "The planning board concludes that the proposed expansion of the dwelling is permitted because under Section 12C1C, the application proposes the expansion of the 1,204-square-foot lawfully nonconforming structure located less than 75 feet from the normal high water line by 400 square feet, which is less than the allowed greater of 1,000 square feet or 30% larger than the 400 January 1, 1989 footprint, and that the new foundation may also be placed beneath the expansion." Is everyone in agreement with that?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, so if that's the case, it's a long Paragraph Four, but is there a motion to approve Paragraph Four as written? And, and is ready?
Yes, I approve, I make the word to approve, Paragraph Four.
Paragraph Four.
Paragraph Four, I have written in the...
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
I'm going to suggest two conditions of approval. The first one is a standard one that should be on every, every planning board approval. "This approval is dependent upon and limited to the proposals and plans contained in the application received February 14, 2023, and all revisions, additions, supporting documents, and oral representations submitted and affirmed by the applicant and conditions, if any, imposed by the planning board. Any variation from such proposals, plans, revisions, additions, supporting documents, and representations are subject to review and approval by the planning board. The applicant shall reconstruct and enlarge the dwelling in accordance with this permit and notice of decision." Is there a motion to attach that condition of approval? Any discussion? The idea is basically, you guys submitted this plan, you made these representations, you're bound by them, you want to make changes, come back. Otherwise, stick to the plans as approved.
I'm making a motion that we add that in to the decision.
I'll accept. All in motion, all in favor to accept the motion, yes?
The second condition of approval is, "The applicant and its contractor shall prevent erosion and sedimentation during reconstruction and expansion of the destroyed dwelling unit. By complying with an erosion and sedimentation plan, the applicant shall prepare and submit for approval by the CEO prior to issuance of a building permit."
I make a motion to accept.
I'll second it.
All right.
All right, and so, one last motion. The motion would be to approve the application with the following conditions of approval, as you've adopted, to adopt the notice of decision and to authorize the chair to sign the notice of decision on behalf of the planning board. You can say so moved if you want.
So moved.
I would say, I would say I'll make a motion for what he said. I'll never remember all that.
But the idea is that you're approving the application, you're also adopting this notice of decision, you're approving that with the conditions of approval, and you're authorizing Tim to sign it on your behalf. Okay, is motion?
I'll second it.
All right, all in favor?
All right, I will save this document. I'll try to get it out of here just as soon as I can.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
We have scripted some things we were going to say tonight, but this may be a case where less is more. Did you want to say anything? I mean, they voted and granted your approval, maybe it's just thank you and...
Yeah, no, it is thank you. I had scripted it, and this was, this was not the, you know, the question. It's unfortunate because it could have been, you know, a better experience, but I did want to thank each of you for hanging in and literally going in a blizzard and responding to emails on Easter. And I appreciate that, that you all did the right thing and went to the terms of practicality. So I really appreciate it, and if we ever get results, we all come on out and say hi. We'll invite you out to see the, see the new structure.
I was going to say that we were, our intent as a planning board was always to just look at all the...
I was gonna say that we were, our intent as a planning board was always to just look at all the evidence and Keith, who recukes himself, was just looking for the evidence so he could make his, his decision. So there was never meant to be any messing, it just, and the rest of us here are very new to the planning board, so. First and second years, so.
Well, thank you, thank you for your service.
So this is just a learning experience for us.
Yeah.
And it's just been, we've been trying to walk through how to do it properly.
Yeah, and we're all super busy.
And with the help of a member of council here.
Yes, thank you for that.
We appreciate it.
We appreciate Councilor Castle thinking this is important.
I would like to apologize for not being there. When they called me, they said they were going to have the meeting. I got a Prius.
Oh.
I live on a road that's not maintained by the town. And no way.
You gotta take care of that.
It's a non, it's an old stagecoach road. They maintain half of it and not the half I live on. So I wanted to be there desperately, but I just couldn't do it, so I apologize for that.
Sincerely, I really, I genuinely, as the director, I really do appreciate the effort. I know it's a lot, and we really do appreciate the care that.
It was a shame.
Yes, it is. If we could build, if we could put it back the way it was, and insurance said, no, you have to have foundation and you have to make a break, like if we could just go back.
Do you want to take a five-minute break so that our assistant can run out a copy of the decision for you to sign?
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you, guys.
It is ten hours.
Reconvene at seven?
Reconvene at seven.
I'll stick around in case there's any problem. Just about, sure. Rick, two quick things. You're still going to have to get a building permit, this is a shoreline permit. And the other thing is a certification of the plan that has to be reported in the registry within ninety days when this turns into a pumpkin.
Is there?
There is a requirement, it's in the last.
At this decision?
That is, well, it's actually a plan. A plan of the reconstruction, for insurance and payments has to be filed with the county. There'd be a certification. Probably for the same reason.
So what, plan showing the new house, basically?
Basically. It's one of those things where if you can't find it, you need to finish.
They don't get a permit on this.
Yeah, that's, that's going to be easy.
I don't recall this.
I gotta do something.
It's, it's right here at the end of the.
Is it your decision or is it?
It's in the decision.
Oh, okay.
It's an approved plan for expansion of that non-conforming structure must be recorded by the county registry within ninety days of approval. I mean, I really tried, I want to go through it.
Is that your condition in the decision?
No, that's, that's out of this model shoreline zoning. Amy would have asked a few more questions.
So.
Yeah, he came over and he paid that one hundred and forty.
So I can't believe that you're not right, but it might be a possibility that you're.
Here we go. So when you come, when we start in on the non-conforming structures and expansions. It's on page six.
Okay.
All right, so is that, and I think.
That's a good question, I think.
Okay, we're going to be back to order at seven o'clock on April thirteenth of two thousand twenty-three. And here's the here is the signed paperwork, right? And we need to sign those papers. Oh, you just have to sign.
Yeah, I think you're the only one that's signing.
All right, so. I make a motion to close business item three point one.
I'll second that.
Okay. Oh.
Favor.
We move on to business three point two.
Three point two?
Uh, that's, I'll leave Boris.
Yep, okay, so this should be very, very, very simple, nowhere near as controversial as. So this, I've been asked by Tom Kennison to revise a subdivision plan, and it's with the town, Walker. It's not just for him or myself. So the original plan had a cul-de-sac, you know, circle. And all we're doing is making a T turn around.
So that's right here on the left side of the plan?
So if you look at this plan, which here's the cul-de-sac.
Yeah.
So it's pretty simple to see. So that's what it looked like, that's the way it is today.
Okay.
Alls we're doing is, because of, for life safety purposes, meaning emergency vehicles, getting in and out of there a lot better, is to create a key hammerhead, so just pull it back up and drive it along.
Okay.
It'll look like this.
That is it.
That's what it'll look like.
That's what we're planning.
This is what you get.
That's what we want to approve.
Gotcha.
So that's it. That's the only reason, that's here. And we have the full size here, one will be recorded, one will stay with the town, and.
So everything else here around that perimeter has already been accepted and taken care of?
All pinned out.
All right, and all we need to do is.
I think there's been one lot sold, I'm not positive about that, but that doesn't really contain what the revision is. Because that's not getting changed at all.
So everything else here is all legit, you just want to go from a circle to a T?
That's it. Very controversial. I really push my.
I might, I make a motion that.
Get them all back in.
I make a motion that we accept the call, the T turnaround instead of the cul-de-sac.
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor?
So moved?
I think mine thinks signing.
What are you going to do? Set the pins up, okay, mom wants them set.
Each of you will need to sign.
When I do a T turnaround. Years ago, I surveyed the adjacent remnants of flooding back into that, so I didn't have to. They hired us to research it and the whole place, do a whole topographic of that.
I've only been here two years, so. You're lucky you didn't do my hand right. Yeah, I think Butch.
Yeah. You're gonna come on and show me. Rock and Dills graduates, we can't write.
Forest, oh, scrub brush, little crappy trees, they cleared kind of, they've taken all that stuff out. So we're able to do a topographic pretty easy. Just took us a day and a half, I think.
He's very artistic. Ken, can you do one more thing?
He hasn't understood. He, I don't understand. Which is common, that is, because I tell people what they're talking about, well, Tom, Tom Kennison said. So that finally, I've done that several times, I finally got.
Twenty twenty-three, by the way.
They called me up, and it was a friend of mine.
No, you're good.
And I went, why do I own that? And I said, because you know it.
That one, you're fine. It's only for twenty-three, I'm good.
Process become a licensed lawyer, it's hard work, it's something.
Is there any more comment on this?
Do they have one of those, or they all, you're going to keep them all?
You want to?
I have to take one to the, I have to take one to the, to the bridge of your needs.
You want to take that one?
It has to get recorded.
Yep, Ken said she's gonna, but if you're gonna, that's good too.
I'll go.
Nope, you go ahead, because there's three, he only needs two seconds.
All right.
Gentlemen, please.
I knew that would be easy.
All right, so I call.
Did you work with that guy?
No more discussion?
Nope, I'm good.
Make a motion to close the meeting?
Well, I got one question. What's with the divorce degree that was in our paperwork?
Uh, that goes with the thing to show how she obtained it.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, they're not married.
I kind of picked up on that.
I figured that much, yeah.
All right, I just, I see a divorce, I get nervous.
I knew that. So did they, what did they do? Come, did they, after the fact, just out of curiosity, obviously?
Can we talk about it after the meeting?
Uh, or do you want to? Oh, yeah, yeah, close the meeting.
Let's close the meeting. I make a motion to close the meeting, uh, April thirteenth.
I'll second it.
All right, all in favor?
Did, did they give you plant, uh, the size, size of the, of the building and everything?